Do we have, kicking us through the agenda here, do we have any public comments this evening as it relates to an item on our agenda? If you do, please raise your hand. Is that a minute?
I, well, I raise your hand like this way or on the Zoom?
The, in the, the Zoom folks can raise their hand if they're, if they're an attendee, they can
I see.
Do the raise their hand. Functionality. We've only got a small number of attendees this evening and I don't see any hands raised.
Jim, there is a question in the Q and A. I don't know if that counts.
Jim, you're muted.
How did I get muted? Sorry about that. I am seeing the question. What I will do is take that question and work with Christie to have a response sent from Jeff to that one. It's not particularly in relation to anything on this evening's agenda. It might get discussed, because discuss later on, if we don't answer that question throughout the evening, I'll make sure it's documented. And, yep.
Um, actually, we just put that in the parent Q and A. Christie just loaded it. That question came up this week from another parent. We loaded it to the Q and A. So Amy, if you go onto our website, it should be answered there. And if it doesn't get answered, email me directly. But that did come up this week.
Awesome. Thank you. Good. All right, Amy, then, then answer that one and let us know, Amy, if you don't get that answer like Jeff mentioned. Okay. Obviously, we have our approval payroll payable warrants. I'm assuming everything is going swimmingly. In that case, I haven't heard anything. So we will, I know I saw those things and the signatures on the drive. So moving to the consent agenda portion of our agenda this evening. And the, any discussion as it relates to items one, two, or three in the meeting minutes, any discussion? Okay, I'll maintain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
A second that.
Thank you. Roll call vote. Angela?
I.
Susan?
I.
Cliff?
I.
Lori?
I.
Keith?
I.
Deny it from me as well? Okay, do we have any communications this evening?
All right. I mean, I just had, I just received a parent email which I forwarded to Jeff and he responded during this past week.
Okay, I did, I did see that. Thank you. Do we have any other communications?
Um, I did happen to be able to stop by B S. And they're just doing a phenomenal job, but I am gonna just take a quick moment to say how quick the D P W put that ramp to go around the school. And I'm sure Ace can, I mean, there was a police officer that I don't want to say his name wrong. That was very, very helpful. So go ahead.
Officer Nunezado.
Ah, I couldn't say.
Was instrumental in making it happen. And Steve Mara, D P W, made really quick phenomenal work of it. So.
They did it in a day. So props to them.
Well, if we're gonna throw out compliments, I wanted to compliment the principals on the videos, preschool, pre-opening day videos that were posted for students and families to orient them to what they were gonna walk into on the first day. I just thought those were terrific and were really, really helpful, I imagine. Just clear and welcoming, really nicely done.
And Matt and Jackie, who were high school students, they did a phenomenal job too, for the Toronto, did a great job.
Jim, is this the time you want me to talk about the?
I do, Cliff, because we're not with our executive session tonight. Our typical school committee business items that we do at the end there is after that. So I want to comments, future generations is after that. So I wanted to make sure we, we took care of that. So yes, please. If you could give us an update on the, the election process, that would be great.
Okay. Um, so our attorney drafted an act relative to the election of school committee members in the Berlin-Boylston Regional School District. And presented it to the D E S C for review. While it was under review with the D S E, with Desi. The, at least one town manager, I know Margaret Nadowitz sent an email, but perhaps someone else did as well. There was a little flurry of emails there for a short period of time. Asking specific questions about the act because Russ had shared it with them. Wanting clarifications, et cetera. So Russ took the questions and he redrafted the act and and D E S C was given the, the redrafted act for their review. And now the revised or final version of the act is in the hands of the towns. And we're attempting to get the act to be approved at any fall meetings, town meetings, it might be out. I believe Boylston has already scheduled one. But I could be wrong about that. Berlin has not settled on when they're going to do their fall town meeting, or how many nights it will be, or any of that detail. So at this point, it looks as if the act will be on the town meeting, town meeting's agenda for their approval. Technically, we don't need their approval. We just need the legislature's approval, but all parties involved felt it was important that the community has an opportunity to approve it at the town meetings. So that is what will happen. The act essentially says, there's a lot of words here, but the act essentially says that the spring elections in May will be the, the time at which the new school committee will be elected. And this is a one-time event. And that after that, the elections will be held on the state election cycle, which is every other year. But because of the circumstances we find ourselves in, the election will be moved off to May. And that's all I have to report. Does anyone have any questions that I may or may not be able to answer?
No, thank you for handling that.
You know, I would like to tell you I did a great job, but it's really Russ who did the great job. Russ and I would talk, you know, and then Russ would do the work. So.
I did have a quick question, Cliff. It, does it say in the act that that, that the the move to the state election cycle in November will start 2021 or 2022?
Well, the next state election is in two years.
Um, okay, yeah, that makes sense. Sorry. Okay, so it'd be
No, trust me.
I was just thinking, yeah.
Even when you're involved in it, it's like, okay, what does that mean exactly?
Yeah.
Thing, I think the thing that I missed in, in the agreement was that school committee elections would be held every other year. We're so accustomed to them happening annually. Because it was always a seat open annually. But going forwards, after this May election, there will only be a school committee election every other year, and it will be on the state cycle.
Okay.
And just, this is anecdotal, you know, so just take it for what it's worth. Because I'm in real estate, I spend a lot of time in my car. So driving through Natick and Wayland and perhaps Weston this week or last week, I noticed that along with, you know, the presidential election signs and the senate election signs, there are school committee election signs up. So contrary to, you know, what's, what I've been told anecdotally in my own community, that's not the way it goes. Well, that actually is the way it goes in a lot of places. So it's not gonna be like we're the only school system doing this. It's clear that it happens elsewhere.
So the, the May, in May, the whole slate is up for election and it's only a whatever, few months that they're elected for?
No.
No.
They will be elected for my math is gonna be off here, about about a year and a half.
A year and a half. And so everyone elected
Longer than that. It's actually longer than that, because the next state election will, it will be in 2022. So when you're elected in May, you're on the school committee till 2022.
Oh, yeah, okay. And, and so the whole slate is on the same cycle. Everybody's voted
No.
through to 2022.
Only the two-year members.
Someone will be elect, the two-year members will be up for election in two years. The four-year members won't be elect, won't be up for election for two years beyond that.
So in May, are you saying that in May, the people will be designated as two and four-year?
You know, I'm not sure. I, I, I would have to digest the, the language again to make sure I'm clear about this. So don't take, I'm not gonna speculate because I'll get it wrong. And then everyone will be reporting it. I'm gonna, all I know is that the election's gonna be held in May. There are two-year seats, four-year seats, and the next election will be in 2022. That's what I know, in November.
Okay, so at some point, I'd like to have clarification on how the two-year, four-year thing works and who's slotted into what?
Yeah, so once, once the election's held in 2022, I'll obviously be really clear, because the people who in May were elected to two-year terms will probably, I'm speculating, will have to run again. But the four-year people, people who are elected for four-year terms in May won't be running for election in two years.
Susan, I'll get, I'll get you that, I'll get you that answer from Russ. I have a call with Russ this week.
That's great.
I'll get you that answer from.
Not, not to assert the chair's power, but I can do that because you've asked me to do it.
If you, okay, if you, if you want to do that, you can do that as well. Okay.
And I will send, and I will send an email to everyone. Well, I'll send an email to the chair.
Okay. Okay, thanks, Cliff. I appreciate you doing that.
You're welcome.
And you're right, there was so many emails. I'm glad that we sort of
Yeah, there were too many voices.
Yep.
That was the problem.
Okay, moving into our report section of the agenda, I'm gonna pass it to Jeff, you're first.
Okay, thank you. By the way, Cliff, that's on page three of the regional agreement.
Oh, no, I know. Yeah.
Yeah.
I don't have it committed to memory, Jeff.
Okay, the first thing on the agenda for me is the opening day enrollment report. And what I've done, usually the principals would have some before, and, and because of the way this fell, I know they were busy getting the schools open. So instead, what I've asked them to do is to just help with this and to just go through their own their own enrollment report, sort of at a high level, and just pull out anything that they think might be looked at. And then just give a, just a quick how opening day went. If there is anything, so for example, across the state, we just had to fill out a survey because the kindergarten enrollments are down between 20 and 25% around the state, and that's a concern for the Department of Ed. And in some of these biggest districts, they, they got, you know, it's like 200 less kindergarten students. So we're trying to figure out where all these kids went. So if there's anything like that that appeared in your reports, John and Ace, can you can you pull that out? Looks like there is some. Diane, do you wanna start?
Sure. Um, you know, I'm, I'm very happy to report that, um, you know, currently we have 568 students, this is as of today, but 568 students enrolled in grades six through 12. Of that, we have approximately only 5.8% of our students have chosen to do our full remote option through edgenuity. And in speaking with a lot of, several of the midwark principals, that is a very low percentage of families opting for the full remote option. We, as all of you know, we began welcoming our first, our first cohort in on Monday. And, you know, I have to say, and I said to all the student body today, when we had a all-school Zoom webinar, really how proud I was of everyone in there. Really how they handled the first day, the first couple of days being in school cohort A. Things ran very smoothly. I think that's a testament to, you know, the faculty and the staff, as well as the students and the, and the community in general. Because, you know, students were very respectful. They followed, you know, procedures extremely well. And, you know, they were, they were happy to be back in the building, but they were cautious. And it's gonna take them, you know, a little while to sort of get used to and get a little bit more comfortable in the building. But I was, you know, I was so proud of how, of how everyone did the first couple of days. Our remote learners, we had a couple of, of glitches with some of our postings to our Google classrooms. But again, I think is, you know, as the students get used to, you know, logging in and what does it look like remotely and what does it look like in person? And then that communication and they build that connection with their teachers, I think that that transition is just gonna continue to get smoother and smoother as they, as we go through the weeks at school. Jim asked me a question about, the biggest question on how did parent drop off and pickup go? And the first day was, you know, it was a little challenging. I think, you know, with Toronto, the building is so close to Route 70 that there is not a lot of space. Typically, when you go into a school, there is, you know, a, a distance, you know, quite a long drive, et cetera, and we don't have the benefit of, of doing that. But I'm happy to report that this morning went on, you know, much smoother than it did, than it did yesterday morning. Same thing with, with parent pickup. So as, you know, as we continue to do this, I think it's, you know, it's only gonna get better. But I do have to say, you know, I, how proud I am of, of everybody. I, I don't think that, you know, the opening could have gone any better. I think it, we're gonna look at some things that we can improve upon. We're gonna discuss it with the faculty and staff tomorrow and make any changes that we need to make. And, you know, continue to try to, to try to improve.
Thanks, Diane. Ace?
Thank you.
So thank you. I'll try to be brief. You know, I think it's been a wonderful opening. Not without its hiccups, not without its snafus, but it's just, it's amazing to have children back in the buildings. Yeah, starting off where Diane left off, our arrival procedure, our new arrival procedure went really well. Even on the first day, and today it was down to about 15 minutes. We were able to get announcements off just about on time, which is is a struggle on a normal second day of school. So that was really successful. Dismissal was a, we had some technical difficulties on the first day. Took far too long to get everybody out of the building. But today, you know, we made some adjustments and we cut it in half. I'm pretty confident that moving forward, we're gonna get it even, even shorter in window than that. It was about 20 minutes this afternoon, which again is pretty good on a typical day. I have to, you know, also reiterate what Diane said. The kids, the kids have been fantastic. We, we talk all summer and we worry, you know, what is it gonna look like with kindergartners and first graders wearing masks? And let me tell you, I, I wish they could teach lessons to some of the adults. Not necessarily in my, in the building, but when I go grocery shopping and things like that, the kids are fantastic. And very appropriate. They're getting multiple mask breaks over the course of the day. They're advocating and asking for them when they need them. And the, the teachers are listening, you know, as we, we're, we're teaching them the right ways to take them off and put them on. We're, we're doing a lot of things around hand washing. And overall, the kids have just been fantastic. They're really adjusting to, to this new situation, I think, better than I am. It's still, it's way too quiet in that building for me. But we're, but we're getting there. In terms of enrollment, did you guys want me to talk enrollment too?
Yes, please.
We have 237 live students that will be in the building over the course of the year, split into the two cohorts. We have 42 kids that are fully remote. So a little over 10%. You know, so that, that's been going well. We've been adjusting and we've been tweaking our processes as we go. I am about 13 students higher than I was initial enrollment last year. So numbers have gone up. That is including the, the remote kids. You know, I know that there was some discussion, some concern about students choosing to go to private school. And we did, we ended up with, I believe, four students that, that went to private school. I can tell you off the top of my head, we have three kids that returned from private school as well. So I think the, I think that, that concern was ended up being a little negligible. That's what I had prepared, but I'm, I'm, I'll welcome any, any questions or comments.
Ace, my ace. Question for you, and then John, if you could answer the same question when you, when you talk. When the switch was made on the remote plan for school from edgenuity to being district delivered, did that increase? Was, did the number change on terms of the students who chose remote after that? Did if I look at your report, right, the numbers went up, changed a little bit just from the date, this one on September 8th. Was, so was there a change in parents' requests for the remote once they knew it was a district-delivered plan?
You know, we tried to maintain that as kind of a cutoff time. There were a couple of families that had been in pretty frequent communication with me that were kind of straddling the fence and were on either end of it. So I do think that it ended up, you know, moving over to, to their side when they knew that it was gonna be district employees. But I wouldn't say that the, there was a big swing involved.
Thank you.
No problem. Save the best for last?
Yes.
Ace hates it when I do that. Um, good evening, everybody. I'll try to be brief too. In terms of numbers, we will welcome back 181 fully included students. We have 19 students who are doing the remote plan. And to answer your questions, Jim, we added just one. They were kind of leaning that way anyway. So I was, you know, and I was not surprised. I was actually a little, I was a little surprised only in that Berlin parents know the two of the teachers involved very well, because they've a long time B M S teachers. So I worried a little bit about losing more, but people were very invested in having their kids come back. And Echo, Ace and Diane said the kids have been great. Ace is right. If we could get them, just take the, our kids to the mall and they could teach other adults how to behave more appropriately during a pandemic. It is a little quiet. I have to agree with my good friend, Mr. Thompson. It's, they're still peeling their way. It's been a long time, even for the older kids, even for our fifth graders. You know, it's been a while since they were in the building and you see the tentiveness. Only today did we start to play rock, paper, scissors at lunch again. So we're moving in the right direction. We also had a couple of technical glitches on dismissal, nothing like Mr. Thompson, because we don't have that many people. But I've been very grateful, and I want to be sure to mention this. Parents who have been dropping off and picking up have been incredibly flexible. As we kind of change how we, we do those two procedures in the morning, usually you could pull up, drop off your kid, they'd come in and off, people would go to work. Now people have to wait in their car and we let them out one at a time. It's, it's fun for me because I get to see a lot of people. But I know the parents, you know, they have other places to be. And I, I'm really grateful for their patience. Very similarly, at the end of the day, we kind of thought dismissal would go one way and we've had to kind of tweak it a little bit while we worked through some technical issues. And people have been just incredibly patient with us. And just the last thing really quickly, the teachers have really made this special. And I know that's true at all three schools, but I'll just talk about my fabulous school. If you're driven by, you see the balloons and you see the ribbons and you see the bunting around the circle there in the middle where the flag goes. That is, in case you're wondering, that is now called Library Island, where Mrs. Eccleman takes kids every, every period for their library class. I don't know what that's gonna look like when it starts smelling, but for now, we're doing a lot of work outside. And it's gone really well. We'll regather tomorrow and work with the teachers around some adjustments. And the next group comes on Thursday and we'll be ready for them.
Jim, is it okay if I make a comment at this time?
Sure, please do.
I just wanted to say, my, my children went to cohort A. They're both at Toronto and one of them has terrible anxiety. And Diane's video, we watched it the night before. They'd watched the beginning of it and then they were like, oh, too much school. And then we sat down, we watched it together the night before, and it put both of them at ease. They got in my car. We drove into school. They were relaxed. They came out of school. They were happy. Carol did a great job. I get to see her twice pulling in and out, and she was a happy face, even though, you know, we're all getting used to new things and but I'm just really appreciative to the administration, to the teachers for trying to get these kids back in school, because I, I almost am teary about how different my children are right now. They're telling me about their teachers and funny things and things they're looking forward to, and it's a complete change. So I just wanted to say how grateful I was for all of the incredible effort, and it's been a lot. The community appreciates all of it. So thank you.
Okay. Jeff, item B on your
Okay, thank you, thank you. Thank you, principals, for that update. Oh, by the way, we put, we had Mr. Campbell go last because he's a Buffalo Bills fan, and that's where they feel most comfortable. So we had him go last. We didn't want him to
You're gonna have to eat those words, Superintendent Zangy. This is our year.
Yeah. Okay, so the next thing is the live streaming of classes. We had a, a few teachers over the summer and ask us about their ability, will they be able to live stream their classes? Not necessarily view the, put the camera on the students, but to have the camera on them. And this it, it mostly came from teachers who taught these sequential courses, like these math and science courses where they build on each other. So when we originally looked at it, we thought, well, it's illegal to do that. And so we get enough people saying, well, it is, but there's a way around it. So we did talk to Russ about it and Russ said, yeah, it is illegal. This is why it's happening, Ross. And, um, but you can, but there's a way around this. It's perfectly legal to record a voice, someone's voice, if you first let them know that they're being recorded. that they're being recorded. So it's really as simple as that and then some sign in the building. So in your packet, we included, we kind of included just a few notices around recording that we send out. So each, each principal included something they always send at the beginning of the year. And it's a document they use to, so the parents, to let parents know that their child may be videoed or picture may be taken of them and that picture may be used on our website or in some video. And the sheet gives them a chance to opt out. If they do not want to consent to that, they can sign that sheet and they can opt out of it. And we've been sending that out. All schools send, send that out. The second document in there is called the virtual meeting notice. And that was also drawn up by Russ last spring. And that was something that each teacher was asked to read before they started a Zoom meeting. And that will continue this year also. And then the third document is the live streaming notice to parents, which the principals will send out to all parents if they haven't already. So some teachers, it's, it's optional. If a teacher wants to use it, we'll, we'll supply a camera for class. As the notice says, at no time will the camera be pointed at any of the students in the class. It will always be pointed at the teacher. And this is really a great opportunity to include both cohorts at the same time. So the teacher he has cohort A in front of him, will be, have this cohort A in front of him, but the cohort B will be allowed to to join the class virtually. So it's a way to keep them, the cohorts together. And those teachers believe that they'll be able to cover additional content. So are there any questions about that?
Jeff, for those students who opted for edgenuity, that remote learning, are they able to access any of those?
No, because they're taking separate classes. They'll be taking separate classes. Today, for example, you know, they selected courses last year. So the guidance staff, when they were today, they, what they've been in a process of loading up equivalent courses in edgenuity. So they will be taking separate classes and they will be, they would be out of sequence anyway, so they wouldn't be able to join.
Are there any such things as, you know, class meetings or that kind of thing where their, their cohort is meeting at sort of a non-academic context where they're just community building, that kind of thing? Are, do those occur as well?
Everybody, including those remote students?
Well, first, do, do, are there sessions like that being livestreamed for students, enrolled students in the district?
I believe the Wednesday sessions will allow both cohorts to, to be livestreamed at the same time.
But, and the edgenuity students, or can they?
No, the edgenuity students, they'd be separate. So there is nothing, we have nothing that includes them in the academic piece. They will be able to, as you know, because the committee voted on it, they will be able to participate in extracurricular activities and in sport. So that will be that, they will, they will continue to have that connection to the schools.
But not, not the community meetings on Wednesdays?
No, because those are, those, those have an, those have an academic focus. And they will be out, they'll be slightly out of sequence.
Or I just, this is just one step aside. When students are they're still going to be running for like class officers and things, right? Is council, that student council, that kind of thing? Yes. And can the edgenuity students participate in that?
I think Diane and the advisors have been pointing together some, she's been working with the advisors. There are some, there are some extracurricular activities which most students would be able to participate and there are some which they will not be able to participate. And I don't know Diane, how far along you are on that list.
So the, the latest update, you know, we had reached out to all the advisors of all of our clubs and all of our clubs are going to, you know, give it their best shot at doing these clubs virtually, which then would include all of our, you know, edgenuity students as well.
That's great. I appreciate that effort. I think that's important for students.
We do too. We'll try to get them involved as much as we can in the, in the daily activities of the school. And we've had a lot of questions from parents about that. So any other question about the virtual, the virtual meeting? Okay, I'm going to, I'm going to skip down to the I'm going to skip to the edgenuity piece. This is for grade six to twelve, because there were a lot of questions and there have been some delays in that. So I did want to just talk to, to you about that. There were two models you could choose in edgenuity. We sort of were learning as we went along here. And one of the models, the edgenuity provided the content and then the district provided the teachers. The second model was edgenuity provided everything. They provided the content, they provided the teachers, they provided other academic supports. They basically provided the whole thing. And so when we were looking at a, at a greatly increased cost. So as we were looking through that, we, we ended up having to go with option two because we didn't have enough teachers to do a remote learning. One of the things, if you remember, we talked about is we said we were trying to find out how many teachers were going to go out, were, were going to go out on a medical leave and then we could possibly match them up to students who were remote learning. But it turns out, we really didn't have a lot of teachers who, who, who went out on medical leave. And so we were left with this option. We had a bunch of students who needed a remote learning plan and we didn't have any teachers. So we had to purchase that option. And so that's what we did. So and that coincided with edgenuity saying to us, we can't have any, we, you can't have elementary seats because there has to be at least two hundred and fifty students, which we didn't have and a lot of other districts didn't have either. So we had to come up with that homegrown plan, which we, which we did. And it seems to be working fine so far. But there have been these enormous delays in getting the K-12 model. And, and part of the reason when we talked to the, the rep is that all at once, these requests that they had for forty to fifty seats went up to four to five hundred seats. And so when we spoke to them about a month ago, they said, ah, don't worry, we have infinite seats. We can handle as many as you can, you can give us. And all of a sudden, they didn't have enough teachers. They're, they're hiring. The rep told us they're hiring fifty teachers a week just for the remote, remote learning. And they're still having trouble covering it. So we thought the issue was we would just sort of last the line because we're a tiny district. But what happened was, we could have, we could have actually had our students log on. The problem was the model we picked, which included their teachers, didn't have enough teachers. So the, the students would have been able to get on and they would have been able to start doing work, but it would have been all on their own. And, and we had said, well, you're going to have support, you're going to have teachers, you're going to have all these other things. And those teachers just weren't there. So we did speak with, we did speak with their rep on Friday. And they said that the courses were being loaded on and that our site was being built. And our, our system administrator met Monday, what, she did two sessions with the middle school and high school parents, remote parents, to talk to them about the program. We have thirty-three students so far. But the cutoff is the eighteenth. So the cutoff is Friday. I know Diane has picked up a couple this week. But we think the best case scenario will have this up and running Thursday. Worst case, Friday. And then we have, and there'll be, then there'll be a few outlines. There'll be some kids who we have to work individually on their courses. But we think we got it. We finally think we got this going and, and we just want to thank the parents who've been patient with us. And, and we understand if you haven't, because I know there's a lot of anxiety when you're waiting for something. But we were going as fast as we can and we, we, we think we got it. So we'll, we'll see. We think we should be up, up and running on Thursday or Friday. So that's that. Is there any questions about it? Okay. And then the last thing is superintendent goals and, which I don't have, and I will have them on, in October, or, or next meeting, all fleshed out. But I did start to work on them. So I'll just talk briefly about them. I'll just read you sort of the, you know, just sort of the general goal. So the first goal is really a shared goal because the principals and, and the directors will have the same goal this year. And there's a reason for that. I'll get to that in a second. That by June 2021, the superintendent and administrative leadership team will be prepared to bring forward to staff a common understanding of equity as it relates to all students, defining what equity looks like in our school district. And addressing areas in which we have determined through data collected from the state and within the district, where there are areas of need, of need of improvement. So obviously, this is an equity goal and our focus this year will really just be on the, the leadership team. You know, as we talked about this a little more, I, I know I talked with Susan about this in the summer. As we talked about it more, we realized that as a leadership team, we really don't have a common definition of what it means to us. And so to do work with the faculty would, would almost be impossible if we really don't know what it means. So and I don't have it in that definition, but what we're planning to do is we're going to engage a consultant to work with us throughout the year, to work with the leadership team. And this will be one of the, one of the things we all, and this is why all of the leadership team will have that as a goal. So the principals will have it as a goal in their schools. And, and the, and the district administration will also have it. Again, to, to include equity or just to have that as a mindset. You know, this common idea when they, when they do their own work. And so they'll find out what it means, what it means to them as they do their work also. So that's a district improvement goal. It'll be a shared goal. Mine will look a little bit different to them, although we will, than, than theirs will. But we will certainly work together on it throughout the year. And we will definitely, we'll, we plan on engaging these the consultant at least three times this year and, you know, look for some things that we can all, we can all do together. So that's, that's goal one. That's a district improvement goal. The second goal is a, is a parent and community engagement goal. And it says that, it says here that by June 2021, the student superintendent will have established and met with a parent and community advisory board, representing members from each of the three schools. The purpose of the board will be to provide the superintendent with ongoing support, ideas, and perspectives on areas related to school and district improvement and changes within the community. We, we've put together, when we did the reentry plan, we have a, a group of parents and they've been, they've been incredibly valuable in leading, they've done so much for us in terms of the, the reentry plan. They still, we still do work with them. So I'm hoping I can, I can take some of those parents and include them on the advisory board. I'm also hoping to get people from the community who aren't parents, who I think are, and they have, they have a different perspective on the schools. And also to include some students. I'd like to hear what the students have to say about where we're going and what they think. I'd also like to hear their opinions about equity in the district. So I will, I'll flush that out a little bit more at our next meeting. And then the third goal is a professional practice goal. And it's a continuation really of my goal from last year. Just, and it says during the 2020, during this 2021 school year, the superintendent will continue to meet with his mentor for the purpose of strengthening his leadership skills and targeting areas that noted in his 2020 evaluation. But more importantly, you know, one of the things that, you know, we could never have predicted was COVID-19. And so I'm, I'm very fortunate in that my mentor, my mentor is is also the executive director at Mars and has a lot of insight into regional school districts and gets a lot of information upfront. And I find that that's really what I, 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 I need the most. I try to stay current. I try to get this information as quickly as possible. But I find that, you know, when I get texts and emails from her, I, I can stay, you know, a step ahead of the game. So again, I'll, I'll flush that one out a little more. Does, does the committee want like the draft of this? I should have it done. I should have at least a draft by next week or so. Do you, do you want to see that before I, you know, before I actually put it before you or do you want to see something like that?
I think that'd be helpful, Jeff, because you're going to specify them out more, right? With the benchmarks and the evidence and all that?
Yeah, and I'm going to put like, I have been going through and put in the standards and indicators and done all that. So I'll do it on just a Word document before I put it into into the computer just as a draft and send it out to you. So it'll, it, it it won't have the same format. It'll have the same information that I would know that I had in my goals last year. So all the standards, action steps, indicators, that'll all be laid out. So I should have that. Probably by end of next week, I'll have it.
You're thinking of three goals? Because last year we worked to have four.
Yeah, Jim and I spoke about that. And, you know, one of the things he said is with all the other stuff that's going on, that three goals would be, three goals for the, for this year. And if that's okay, I would like just have three goals for the year.
And so is the one, which of these is the student learn, is one of, one of these is a student learning goal, right?
Well, the district improvement plan I looked at as a, as a, as a student learning goal also.
The district improvement plan?
The district improvement goal.
So I'm not sure which.
That's the first goal. I, that's the first goal was the, the equity goal. I looked at as a district improvement goal. But I also think it takes into, it takes into account student improvement goal. The equity piece, because that's really what it, that's really what it's aimed at.
Yeah, I think that, that, that can become evident in how you set your evidence for progress. Right? Your outcomes.
Yeah, I, I, I agree, I agree with Susan. Jeff, I think it's reasonable. We talked about this right to now we're to three goals. But I think you know, we, we want to make, I think we do need to make sure that we obviously tie in that so that, that evidence for progress is there, right? So I think the draft will help with that because if, if this, if we're going to need more further clarification, that time to give you feedback earlier in the process for when you present in October.
Got it. Thank you.
That'll be a good, good spot.
Well, I'll send it out. And just letting you know, you know, you can give me feedback on the entire.
Yeah. Quickly as well, I want to make sure, we'll talk about it quickly. When, when we talk about our school committee goals later on in the meeting, we'll talk about our goal as it relates to community engagement and we can tie that into your goal, right, and align with you better. As part of that second goal, I would like to see you, when you're incorporating that, that group of folks that you'll use as your sounding board. that group of folks that you'll use as your sounding board or your, your committee there of parents, teachers. I think it'll be important to include a school committee member on that panel as well. I think that, what's that?
Yeah.
Well, I think.
I didn't see anybody raising their hand.
No, I mean, I, I think it's, well, I think, you know, just my opinion is, you know, some of the feedback, i- if I look back, right, and we learned from the things as we related to COVID and as we moved into working on these plans and some of that stuff, right? If we look back and we learn from our mistakes and see where we may have been able to improve upon that process, one of the things we talked about was maybe involving school committee members earlier in the process, right? So as just in a general idea, it might make sense because we're working on a goal that's aligned with you to, to include a school committee member. And that may not be something, it's the same school committee member each time, but say it's a school committee member involvement and we work as a committee and to revolve that, right, just to sort of keep that, that engagement going. So that would just be a recommendation I would.
No, no, that makes sense, Jim. Thank you.
Okay.
I don't know who's going to draw the shorts straw, but yeah, it makes sense.
I don't think anybody looks at it that way.
Maybe Angela. She can stay around a little longer.
Okay. Any other questions, comments, committee wise, as it relates to Jeff's goals?
I do, Jim, just want to, just quickly, just, I just want to thank the fire and police and the highway for working with us to get the schools open. You can't open the schools without them ever. And I know Keith alluded to this. Steve Merrill and the Highway Department did an awesome job, put it in that temporary space. You know, Ace had an idea that, that the best way to do this was to have parents go around the school. But part of the issue was there was some grass along the side. So we needed a sort of a temporary, temporary road about 30 or 40 feet. And they got it done in almost no time, put down some road millings and paint and put lawn seed and did the whole thing. And actually, just so you know, if this works and that's something that Ace thinks, you know, this is really a good model, we would, we would put in a permanent section there, permanent piece of road, 30 feet. And when we do that, we'll need to get school committee approval. So we'll bring that to you with just, this is just like a pilot program with temporary materials down. And again, we, we got approval from the police and, and, and in highway. So it all, it all is up to code. But it's, it's not a permanent, it's not a permanent section yet. So that'll be something for the spring to see how it works out. I also want to thank Matt Meekham for, he bought a mask for everybody in the district and even school committee people. I'm not school committee people. I don't know if he included you. But if you didn't, it'd be too bad because they're really, really nice masks. But he did include central office. I can't think of a more stylish way to hide this face, actually. Very nice.
It's good.
That's my, that's, that's everything from me. Thank you.
Thanks, Jeff. And from the school committee perspective, thank you to all those folks as well. I think we were very appreciative as well. Hey, Carol, I believe you're up next.
Hi. Superintendent Zangy had asked me to make the school committee aware of an addendum that we've made to the plan, to the reentry plan that was voted on on August 7th. This addendum that you should have in your packet speaks to the Wednesdays. I'm just going to, do you mind if I quickly read it to, I think this is just very short. Wednesdays will be preserved for teacher preparation and planning, meetings and professional development and other district commitments. Therefore, Wednesdays will not be used for makeup days for students in cohort A when holidays occur on a Monday and or Tuesday, or for cohort B when holidays occur on a Thursday and or Friday. When we had a chance to step back and think about this, this Wednesday, it, it, we realized it was confusing, it was getting complicated. It impacted the structure and the consistency of the weekly schedule for students and parents and teachers trying to figure out, you know, do we come in on Wednesday? Is this the week? What happens if there's a Thursday, Friday vacation? And it also took away from the commitment we, we made to the teachers to use Wednesday in part for planning and meeting days and for special education as well. So that was one of those things we, we, we thought and, and we decided we wanted to go with this addendum. So we want to add this and we'll add this into the plan. So this was one of those pieces that we talked about, a few tweaks to the plan I'm going along in the process. So this is one of them. Any, any questions?
It seems that the number of Monday, Tuesday holidays is comparable to the number of Thursday, Friday holidays.
We, we actually looked into it. In fact, one of our principals figured that out during our conversations about this. And it was actually only off by about two days between the, the two cohorts. And, you know, at the end of the year, we, who knows how we're going to land. So we thought it was worth making a change just for that, that difference. And we know that the kids will come out balanced. So.
Yep.
Thank you. And I know Jeff's, I know Jeff's hoping that it only snows on Wednesdays, so.
I looked at the farmer's almanac. It's supposed to get a lot of snow this year.
Oh, we are. Yeah.
Well, those snow days, I can tell you that.
Okay.
One reason to smile.
Any other questions for Carol before we move on? All right, Mr. Conry, you're up. Bob, you're on mute, Bob.
There we go. So I'm just going to follow up on my school committee report. The first time I reported on was the, we applied to a FEMA grant. And this is a grant that's available to schools as well as towns. And the, as a regional school district, we can apply directly. If you, if we were municipal, school districts need to apply through their town. So this is something I felt was important and to prioritize because we had some ability to do it on our own and find out what would be available to, to get. It's, it's technically an unlimited grant. There's no limit to what we can apply for, but there's, there's parameters to the program. We, we've applied for 112,000. A lot of the costs are PPE. We also have costs for cleaning materials like the backpack sprayers. You know, the gowns that are needed for the nurses in COVID-19 HVAC air quality study. So we have a lot of things we've applied for. I think a lot of these are likely to be approved. I think the PPE is almost a certainty. And so this will be good news because if we can obtain this, they'll, they'll pay for 75% of these costs. And what we would do is I would basically take all this money that was going to go towards the, I don't even know what the name of the grant's called, call it the COVID grant where we have 211,000. And that's kind of the core grant we're using to cover our, our needs for this hybrid learning environment. And a lot of the costs that we had assigned to that were, were some of these things. So that will give us some relief to cover some of the unanticipated things that we, that have come up throughout this process. So there's no questions on that. And, and, you know, right now it's not certain, but, you know, we're, we're an approved entity. They're going to take 30 days to review this. The state reviews it first and then the federal government reviews it. And I'll, I'll send, I'll follow up and report this again, once we find out for sure what's approved. So that's good news. The second item I have is a, a revised bus contract. Or I guess a proposed agreement for how we handle the first half of this school year. This was not their first proposal. There's been some back and forth and several discussions between the president of the company and myself. I've updated Jeff on it. Basically, what they've proposed in their most recent submission is that we pay for 50% of the costs of the first 10 days where we were in the professional development, preparing for school mode. NRT had to do some preparations themselves to get ready for the school year. So we're basically essentially paying for five out of those 10 days for them to prepare. And then on the Wednesdays where we're fully remote, they will, they're requesting payment of 78% of our costs of our, of our usual rate, which is the same percentage we agreed to last spring. You know, I've looked at what other districts are doing. I feel like this is a reasonable offer. It's, it's through December 31st, 2020. You know, we've also asked them to do a lot of things for us. We've had to set up two routes for every bus. So there's a Monday and Tuesday route for bus one in Boylston. And they have a separate Thursday and Friday route. They're seating the kids back forward, keeping their windows open. They're, they're, they're doing a lot of things. I, I think all in all, it's a pretty good partnership. It's not perfect, but when you get to the business items section of the meeting, I would recommend approval of this and I'm certainly willing to hear any questions and respond to them.
It sounds to me, Bob, like this is the best that you've been able to work out with the bus company. You know, that's mutually agreeable between both parties.
Right, right. And the other, the other part of this is, you know, a part of the agreement is that they're going to be paying their drivers for five days. We're, we have the potential of losing our drivers. If they're only getting paid for four days, they can get another job. There's plenty of people who need drivers. And we could lose pretty good drivers who are familiar with our routes. And so continuity is an important piece as well. So if there's no questions, I'm going to, just, I want to give a brief update on transportation in case there's any parents on the, on the call. So we are prioritizing tomorrow on the remote day. We'll be prioritizing requests related to Thursday and Friday. And then that'll give us time on Thursday and Friday to work for the remaining requests related to next Monday and Tuesday. I see in my inbox, I have about seven or eight emails from the bus company for things that they've addressed. If you've made a request as a parent, wait for a confirmation back to hear that it's been changed before assuming that that's the case. We, the last thing we want is somebody assuming something's been done and a child gets dropped off somewhere else. So we have a closed loop process. You will hear back from either the school secretary or myself that a change has been made. There's no questions on transportation. I'll move on to the last item. Hearing none. This last item is shocking to me, but it's fantastic news, I think. We basically have just found out about a week ago that we can offer free meals to all of our students. And we're learning on the fly on quite, on some of the rules on how this program works. But what we've been told is that, well, before I go into the details, I did want to let you know I shared a Q and A document. This is what we received from DESI and the USDA that outlines the program and, and kind of has specific questions and answers on how it works. But basically, every student, whether they're a free lunch, reduced lunch, or they're paying for their lunch, they can all have a free lunch and a free breakfast. And it's not specific to our students, it's specific to any youths. I believe it's between the ages of zero and 18. However, we're not preparing meals that are suitable for children under the age, under school age. So really, it would be school age children up to 18. It includes students attending private schools. We will get reimbursed the full free student reimbursement rate for these meals, which is approximately $3.50. So we'd be reimbursed as if everybody's paying the full price, which makes this financially viable. There's no way we could afford to do this if, if we weren't getting that reimbursement. It's great for the district. Most importantly, it's great for parents and kids who, right now, there's a lot of struggles obtaining foods and food accessibility issues. There's communications that have, we've received with statistics on it that are a little bit staggering. Much more of a challenge to access for some people than we realize. So this, we think, will be a great program for students and families. And to the district, it helps us potentially sell more meals and avoid considerations like reduced hours or furloughs for our food service staff. Because we, you know, we're going to have 40% of our usual attendance. And if you think about 40% less meals, you know, that's going to have an obvious impact on the financial results of the program. So this is great news all around. One thing I just did want to say for any parents attending is we found out about this after we ordered our food for the first couple of weeks of school. So if we have a kind of a drastic and significant, drastic kind of quick increase in demand, we're not really prepared to, to handle it until September 28th. We're going to be ordering food for September, the week of September 28th to ramp up what we have on hand. I will send out, you know, again, we're still digesting this. I'll send out more information. I think we, either in this, this Friday's communication to parents or potentially something separate, we'll send something out explaining it more. We're also going to look into ways to try to get, you know, kind of pre-orders so that we know what the demand is. And we haven't worked out that process yet, but we do want to, we don't want to waste food. We want to basically order what we need. And this applies, these free meals apply to both in-person for students in school. It applies for any students who opted for full remote learning. And it, and it applies to students in cohort A or B who are home for three days. They can get three breakfasts and three lunch for those days. So, you know, I, it's a great program. I think it's going to be a lot of work for our food service team, especially as we kind of adjust and get it up and running. But I think over the long haul, it'll be kind of a win-win for students, parents and the district. So.
Bob, what part of the, that's a federal grant. Is that right? Federal funds?
Yeah, it's not even really a grant. I think it's just, it's just a different form of food service program that we're not typically available to offer. And they've made it available to districts in remote learning and hybrid learning modes. I'm not sure what prompted the decision. I think, I think there's been, I know I was asked to fill out a, a petition by Project Bread. And I think a lot of school district administrators were. So I think there was some food and kind of hunger group advocates who, who made the case politically to get this to happen.
Basically, expected that that lasts, will last the entire year?
Well, so that, they applied. Right now, it's approved through December 31st, 2020. The request from, I think the state, it's not quite completely clear to me whether the state, I think our state specifically applied and requested it through the whole year. However, so far, it's only been approved, what, the way they worded it was through December 31st, 2020 or until funds are exhausted. So.
That's the caveat.
Yeah, yeah. But I think the fact that they've published a date implies that, that it would be pretty hard for them to pull back from that date. I, I kind of read that a little bit more as there's a potential for it to go after December 31st. I mean, to, to pull that back would be, would be irresponsible.
Yeah.
Not that that hasn't happened before.
Bob, did I hear you say that it's, I thought I heard you say that it's available for school systems that are using fully remote and hybrid. But I assumed that if we were all in with this would. But I assume that if we were all in, this wouldn't be a program we'd be eligible for?
It's not completely clear. Like, I think that's, I mean, they had one town hall meeting and they have a Q and A, but I mean, we have like 50 more questions. You know, there's there's some nuances to this. So we do have questions like that. You know, there's a question of, I don't think à la carte items, à la carte items are covered. So, but those, yeah, Cliff, I think that's something we're certainly going to follow up on.
Well, I'd just like to say I'm not accustomed to the federal government making such a good decision on the fly. So it's a little shocking that they actually understand that there's a need for for food for kids and that they're actually doing something about it. So hooray.
Oh, it's an election year.
Yeah.
Yep.
And they don't have to balance their budget.
I will not respond to that, Mr. Zane, because that could get me in trouble.
So again, we need to, we're learning on the fly. We'll we'll send out some more communication on it. And you know, in the in the next two weeks, I think, you know, we've ordered what we've ordered and if demand increases, I'm not sure what we'll do, but I don't necessarily anticipate it that being an immediate thing. But will, any parents who are interested can email either me or Lauren Staples, the Food Service Director, for more information. You know, we'll, you know, we're hoping that we see kind of a a jump in participation the week of September 28th. And I don't know if people have seen the meals. They look really good, particularly the remote frozen meals. So a little plug for parents. I know we had limited time and did a grab and grow grab and go grocery bag last spring, but I think they have some very good, interesting options and so I would kind of put in my plug for it. Plus, it's free. So that's all I have.
Good news.
Really good news. I'm glad someone's acknowledging food insufficiency. And the schools are the best vehicle to distribute it. Good.
Yeah, thanks, Paul. I think it's great. Obviously, thanks to Staples as well for her role in bringing that, or I'm not sure who brought it to whose attention, but the work you guys are doing from that perspective, because it's excellent. Thank you. All right. If there's no other questions or comments for Bob, the next item on our agenda, Susan, is the policy subcommittee update. Thank you again for your your document that you used to kind of summarize all that stuff. It makes makes the looking at it very easy. So are there any, are there any of these particular ones that you want to draw any extra special attention to?
Well, they, I just, I want to note that some of them were were updated today. So it's good to just skim them to see. In particular, I guess I want to make sure people have seen the PDF document in the policy folder. In the reports folder, there's a policy subcommittee folder, and there's a PDF file in there that gives a visual summary of all the COVID-based references we're making in these revisions. And I just want to remind people that this is, these, many of these, particularly EBC supplement, is about ensuring that the superintendent has the flexibility needed to respond to events in a nimble fashion during the year according to what's happening with the pandemic. And so that chart, that PDF chart, helps you see at a glance what authorities are given to the superintendent through this EBC supplement. Instead of having to read all the text, you can actually get a good visual overview of where the authority, where, when the superintendent can make changes to policies independently, just on his own, when he needs to inform the school committee and when he needs to get the approval of the school committee. And in conjunction, when he needs to be considering collective bargaining agreements or state law, that kind of thing. So it's a good, it's a good reference document to get a picture of the whole. So I guess I would want to know if anybody had any questions about anything that they were seeing here.
Susan, where'd you get that PDF document? Did that come from MASK?
No, I made it.
Oh, you made it?
Graphic, because there were just so many references. And the language was all a chain, different from one MASC recommended language to another that I just felt like I needed to sort it out. So that's how it ended up.
Oh, that's great.
You know, you know, I've watched the policy subcommittee grow over the last, over many years from being kind of a an occasional committee that I won't say it didn't do any work, but you know, they really weren't helpful overall, I would say. And I was a member of that committee for, to watch how this policy subcommittee has grown and developed. And Susan, you've raised it to a whole other level. Because when I, you know, I am the lowly other member of the Policy Subcommittee, and I'm always impressed by the, your preparation and the way you think through things. And you make things so clear. And this document was, in my view, over and above. It was really, really excellent. And thank you for that.
Well, thank you for those comments, but I also want to thank Christie for sticking with us. I know her plate has been very full. And she kindly agreed to stick with us until we finish this EBC supplement document that references so many policies that we have. I was afraid we were going to really mess this policy up if she stepped out in the middle of that to take care of other work. So we really appreciate her sticking with us to get to this point, because this is a huge number of policies to be considering at in a short time. So I thank everybody, including Cliff for, and Jeff for, and Christie for doing the work. So two of these are up for vote tonight. The anti-harassment policy, which is the same thing you looked at last time, but now has contact information in there in part three. And the face coverings policy, which has been updated based on a lot of information exchanged on the MASC listserv. The other, the the full EBC supplement is you're reviewing part of that, part of that you reviewed in the last meeting. This meeting, you're reviewing the rest of it. So next meeting, we'll vote on the entire EBC supplement policy as well as the IHBHE remote learning and the JE regional attendance policy. So those are not up for vote tonight. And any other questions or clarifications needed?
No, but I will reiterate what Cliff said, which is, thank you very much. I can I can attest to that well, that I look back at my time spent on policy subcommittee and realize that I did not put in this much of a contribution as you did. So I think it's it's setting a good good standard for us to build upon as we we kind of move forward, right? And and it's a good, kind of a good segue into our next discussion, which is school committee goals, right? Because I think you know, we've talked about, and we'll talk a little bit more, but one of the goals that we've talked about is school committee member induction in that sort of process combined with the handbook and all that good stuff. So we're in a good position. Some of the hard work that you've done have put us in a good position to build upon and and work with as we talk about that goal, right? One of those things being continuing to build upon some of these processes we put in place in subcommittees. So I think it's important. So why don't we, so we'll move to that piece of the agenda. Typically, you know, like, so really, how I wanted to cover this item tonight as relates to school committee goals, and I've talked to some of you about this individually, like my discussion with Jeff and simplifying the streamlining with everything we have going on right now and the expectations of what might come throughout the year. Traditionally, in the past, we've had three or four school committee goals, but I think optimally, we talked about this, I think, a little bit in our last meeting, focusing on two goals for this year. One, obviously aligning, minimum one of those with one of Jeff's goals. And but then secondly, building that second goal upon some of the information that we abstracted out of our school committee evaluation process that we went through earlier in the year, right? So so there's two discussions I want to have around that today. One, talk about those goals, those two goals. Two, talk about the process of how we're going to begin to framework these goals. I provided late in the day today on the drive and via an email and a document that speaking, a document that Susan was able to put together as well to stop building a basis for that framework for those two goals. So we'll have that conversation. But the first piece of it is, let's quickly talk about in the past, right, we have utilized our governance workshops to sort of define and build out our school committee goals. And what came out of that in those governance workshops was the beginning of that framework, as well as the discussion and assignment of what we considered subcommittees to work on those particular goals. I'm not necessarily sure that we need to, so what I want to talk about is, from a committee perspective and get your feedback, do we want to we have our as necessary meeting on the calendar for later in the month, the late September meeting, which is where we would typically pull in Dorothy and have that September governance workshop. We've done, we did such a good work framework in these last year. And we've got sort of the baseline for what we want, we want to look at for this year. Does the committee want to have another governance workshop at the end of the month to stop building these out? Or do we feel like our we have the ability and framework that we need to start doing that? And we can, you know, maybe necessarily look at an assignment of sort of our subcommittees for these goals and start to build out the wording for that and moving forward from that perspective. So I'd like to get the committee's feedback on how they'd like to handle it. Don't all jump at once.
I, I think we can do without Dorothy and the governance workshop. I kind of like the idea of doling it out to subcommittees to to work on the the language and the goals to bring back to the full committee. I feel like we already have a sense of what we really need based on the work we've already done, which is this, the school committee evaluation. And clearly, those two goals are front and center, I think.
I would agree with Angela. The only thing I would add is that, a couple of things. I think we've matured as a committee. And we've, you know, when I used to go to the annual conference and speak to other committee members, how few of them actually had school committee goals. Most people go, oh, you really have school committee goals? And, and they would ask about how we had, you know, come to that. And then last year's self-evaluation process was so, in my view, sophisticated and thorough that it, it certainly eliminated the need for a third party to guide us at this point. I, I love working with Dorothy. I love having her as an asset to the committee. She has provided us with a lot of guidance over the last several years. But I don't think that she's necessary right now. And I also agree, as Angela said, the idea of subcommittees is a good idea.
Okay. Lori Keefe. Some of you I've already started these conversations with. So I know we've, we've had some of these conversations, but anything in particular that we want to address. I mean, I, I agree. So just from that standpoint, I agree. I don't think we need to utilize Dorothy in this case. Quite honestly, I think that I agree with Cliff's statements as relates to the value we've received from Dorothy in the past. And I think there may be things in the future where we want to utilize that time with her. So, you know, to Cliff's point about maturing, I think that's taking the next step so that when we do need to pull her into our next challenge and or project, I don't know, terminology wise, you know, she'll be available to us, right? So I would concur and agree.
Whatever subcommittee is working on, the what's the term for when you bring in a committee member and you get them gearing up, whatever the term is?
Induction.
Thank you. Drawing a blank here. She should be able to be a resource for information, but about what other places do and, you know, what materials are available and what things she's seen school committees try that have failed miserably. So she, I think she will be an ancillary resource.
I agree. So, okay, so if we're all comfortable with that piece of it, we'll transition to the next the next phase of the discussion, which is we, you know, we reshared earlier in the month, the school committee evaluation, some of that stuff for people to start reviewing. I hope, I don't know if everybody, I hope everybody got a chance to start looking at sort of the draft ideas that Susan was able to write up. Obviously, with our two goals being just those two that we just quickly talked about, which is school committee member induction, and then the second goal being the community engagement and communication goal. Obviously, with that second goal aligning with, you know, Jeff's community engagement and communication goal as well. So I'll transition back to the to the committee. Does anyone have any questions, comments as it relates to the direction of those two goals being our goals for for this year?
Did people get a chance to see those goals? Because it looks like they were just posted at six or something tonight. Is that referring to Jim?
Your draft, yeah. They, I mean, it was in the email that I had sent earlier as well. I think we hit Christie on her, probably her way home. It got posted to the, to the, to the, to the drive later on, but it was all in the email.
Okay, sorry. Thank you. I just want to make sure people knew what you were referring to. Okay.
Yep, yep. So and again, I think Susan did a great job, obviously, starting to build on those. By no shapes or means is that what our goals will 100% look like when we come back to our October discussion. But I think what it is, is a good, good kickoff point for each subcommittee to kind of start talking about, right? So any, any feedback, questions, comments? I like this. This is easy. Quiet group tonight. Okay.
All right. I guess the question is, are they in the right direction? Do people feel those, as, as stated, they're in the right direction? So if a committee went off to work on this, do they feel like, you know, they can work off of this? Or do you feel they're, they need to be redirected?
Well, I would think that if people go off to work on either one of these goals and they feel that it might not be quite the right direction, that they it might not be quite the right direction, that they would come back to the committee and say, we think it should be a little different. We think it should refocus this way. And then we could have a conversation about that. I think what you gave was, you know, like a story starter.
Yeah, right, right. Spoken as a true teacher there, Cliff.
Josh, did that come out? Sorry.
Do we, do we somewhere, is it on mask? Or do we have a copy of the original survey? I know on the survey it kind of spelled out the metric, like if, if something was really sustainable and embedded, what it was supposed to look like. I feel like if I could read that again, that could help.
Okay.
Refine the goal.
I will, we must have that somewhere, Lori, right? I'll see if I can find that.
Okay.
That's a great idea, Angela. That's great.
Okay. All right, so I believe I'll be appointing, right? But, and I want to leave it open to discussion. I have, again, you know, sort of reached out individually to some of the folks with some of my ideas from a committee perspective. So if it, if it, if it's okay with the committee, what I like to do is maybe just kind of just throw out what I was thinking from a, from a subcommittee perspective and then kind of just get what the feedback is and see what everybody's thoughts are. Just use that as a way to kind of start the conversation. Is that okay with everybody? We're good? Okay. So the first thing I keep in mind, I've been trying to keep in mind, obviously workload for everybody, right? And sort of equity and workload and that type of stuff. And when I sort of prioritize and stack rank the work that folks are doing, I want to take, I take that, I was trying to take that into consider, consideration first. So obviously with Susan's work on policy subcommittee. And then we're going to talk during the vote section, we talk about, and I guess I guess I'm talking about it now. I have to appoint the superintendent ad hoc subcommittee like we've done in previous years, which is another major lift. I want to be considerate every week from that perspective. So when we start to talk about the superintendent evaluation subcommittee, I'm sort of looking at nominating, or appointing the same two folks that we, and I've talked to both individuals, appointing the same two folks who did it in this past year with Susan and Lori with the intent that I, I think it should be a much less of a workload for them this time around because they built those such a great framework and processes last time. They're just building upon that. So what I would like to do with the intent of that is I'll, I'll end up appointing them there with the goal of having now Lori, Lori then transition to being the lead on that in the next year and bringing on a new member to help with the superintendent evaluation. So with that thought in mind, that sort of, in my mind, transitions to new school committee member induction type discussion. So I thought from a secondary perspective, it might make sense for Lori to be part of the subcommittee for the induction portion of that goal. And then what I would like to do is tie that now back to Angela from her work that she's doing from the new hire or the new hire packet material.
Yeah.
I'm tying that back to the induction thing and seeing Angela take that to the next level as well with Lori. So with that being said, my idea for that would be to nominate Angela and Lori to be on the subcommittee for that goal, which would leave then what I would like to do on the other goal is nominate, it would, would be to appoint three members, which we'll have to manage from, to make sure we're not, don't have any challenges from a quorum perspective. But what I want to do is nominate myself, Keith and Cliff for that role. I, you know, from the community engagement perspective, because I think when I look at it from a chair perspective, and then with Cliff, as Cliff will transition out of his role on school committee, I want to, you know, just getting a list of some of his feedback and experience from all his years on the committee. And then is what his expectations is. And now when he goes back out into being just a community member expectations. And I think it's a good way to work with Cliff as he transitions out of his school committee role. And then that would leave obviously the two of us, Keith and I, to manage that goal moving forward. So that was a lot said. So is there any discussion, concerns, questions around that? Because then that would leave Susan to do her work on the policy subcommittee and the superintendent evaluation as well. But also will contribute during school committee meetings to the other portion of the goals.
That all makes sense to me.
Yes.
Good, wow. Nothing, guys are making it too easy on me tonight, too easy on me. Okay, so I don't have it on here, but I don't need to, right? I can just appoint my subcommittees at, at this time, right? So are we going to, are we okay with goal one being the onboarding and induction of new members? And goal two being the community engagement and communication? Are we okay with that order? I don't think, necessarily believe that it matters, but we're good from that perspective? Okay, so I will, I'm going to appoint for goal one, which induction goal. I'm going to appoint Angela and Lori to that ad hoc subcommittee. And in goal two, which is the community, community engagement and communication goal, I will appoint Keith Lewis, Cliff Laporte and myself to that committee.
And so that their task is to come back in October with a smart goal articulated or a draft smart goal with benchmarks and evidence and all that?
Yep. And any, that's a great question, actually. Any other question, any other questions around that?
I guess if they need a model, they could look at last year's goals, right?
That's what I already did.
Okay.
Okay. All right, any other discussion on school committee goals? Awesome, cool. All right, moving into business items. First item on our business items is to appoint our superintendent evaluation subcommittee. We just talked about that. Is there any other further, any further discussion, questions around appointing Lori and Susan to that committee? All right, with that being said, I will appoint Susan and Lori to the superintendent evaluation subcommittee. Thank you both.
I look forward to working with Lori again.
Same, Susan.
I look forward to you, you both doing it again, because last year's evaluation was by far the easiest evaluation I've had to do since being on school committee. So I look forward to it as well. Okay, item number two is, could I have a motion to approve the superintendent evaluation timeline document?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Thank you, any discussion?
I just tried to make sure the dates. The, the only question I had is the ending dates in June. Because I didn't know if you were going to, if you were planning to have one meeting or two meetings in June. And that makes a difference in terms of spreading out the final report work. So I listed both dates there, but we really need one date.
My, my intent was to shoot for the one meeting in our traditional method to shoot for the one meeting. Who I think that should be our goal and our direction unless, unless otherwise, you know, we have a similar situation like we did, you know, this past summer where we needed to add that on. But I think we should continue to stick with trying to stay on track with our, our one meeting.
Okay, so I just want to, I think that we could probably do that because this committee did so well working on a tight timeline last year. It means that we're repeating that this year. But everybody did really well with it, so I'm hoping that that can be done again. That would be great.
This committee, this committee can do anything. Okay, no other further discussion there. We're going to have a roll call vote, Angela.
Sorry, hi.
Okay, Susan.
Hi.
Cliff.
Hi.
Lori.
Hi.
Keith.
Hi.
An eye for me as well. Item number three is approving a policy ACAB. We're approving the changes in the policy since first read. That's our first vote on that one.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you.
Seconded.
Okay, questions? Hearing none, Angela.
Hi.
Susan.
Hi.
Cliff.
Hi.
Lori.
Hi.
Hi.
Hi for me as well. Item number four is approving that policy ACAB. We're approving the adoption of that policy in this vote. Could I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Thank you very much, questions? Hearing none, Angela.
Hi.
Susan.
Hi.
Cliff.
Hi.
Lori.
Hi.
Keith.
Hi.
It's an eye on for me as well. Item number five, policy EBCFA. We're approving the changes of policy since first read. That's our first vote. Could I have a motion, please?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Thank you both, questions? Hearing none, Angela.
Hi.
Susan.
Hi.
Cliff.
Hi.
Lori.
Hi.
Keith.
Hi.
It's an eye for me as well. Item number six is the same EBCFA. We're approving the adoption of that policy. Could I have a motion, please?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Thank you both, questions? Hearing none, Angela.
Hi.
Susan.
Hi.
Cliff.
Hi.
Lori.
Hi.
Keith.
Hi.
An eye for me as well. And our last vote is item number seven, which is approving the FY21 bus contract with proposed agreement on the interim pricing during hybrid learning period as presented dirt by Bob during our agenda today. Could I have a motion, please?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Thank you both, questions? Hearing none, Angela.
I'm sorry, Jim, this isn't, this isn't just during the hybrid learning period, right? It's, it's through
December 31st, right?
Yeah, it's just through December 31st because we might be in remote learning in that time, right? So it's just an aside, I'm not sure it's important, but.
It's through December 31st.
Yeah.
Okay, so let me reread it. We're approving the FY21 bus contract with proposed agreement of interim pricing through December 31st, 2020.
Yeah.
Okay, could I have that motion, please?
Okay.
Cliff. Susan, yep. Good?
Yes.
Thank you. Any other questions? Hearing none, Angela.
Hi.
Susan.
Hi.
Cliff.
Hi.
Lori.
Hi.
Keith.
Hi.
That's an eye is me as well. Items eight, nine and 10 were all first reads. Any discussion on those? Okay, could I please have a motion to adjourn to executive session to discuss strategy respective collective bargaining and to return with, between BBRSD and BBA with the return to open session?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Both, Angela.
Hi.
Susan.
Hi.
Cliff.
Hi.
Lori.
Hi.
Keith.
Hi.
Hi for me as well. You should have in your inbox the Zoom link from Christie. Executive session. Before we jump off of this one, Christie, are we confident we're going to be able to get back into this?
I believe I have fixed the glitch from last time, so fingers crossed.
All right, nice. Okay, we'll see folks in executive session and then if anybody hangs on, we'll, we'll be back.
Race you there.
Thanks. Do we need to stay?
I don't know, he didn't really say anything.
Well, if we all go, then if we all go, then it'll seem obvious that we weren't supposed to, right?
You guys can stay, there's, they're going to come back with a vote on the MOUs and then we'll adjourn for the night. So it's up to you guys.
What are the MOUs, Christie?
The MOUs are stipends, coaching and extracurricular stipends that could be prorated.
Okay.
And if a teacher is exposed in the workplace, they don't have to use their sick time.
Okay, those are nothing that we need to stay on for. Bye.
Bye.
Are you staying, Carol, or are you going? You're on mute.
Christie, can you, can, I just need to, I'm going to lose this link. But Christie, can you send me the link to that meeting?
Carol, it is in Jeff's calendar. Do you have access to Jeff's calendar?
Oh, I was here, I just.
Now I'm listening to somebody else.
That was through the silk, Christie.
Christie, are, are the MOUs that were in this last email the same as we saw before? Or are there changes?
No, Susan, those are the same. It was just a reminder email for the link for the Zoom, but they're the exact same MOUs.
Yeah, once, once Keith joins, why don't we, why don't we start with the coach stipend one first?
Okay.
And then talk with the other one second.
You know, if you wouldn't mind, someone asked a question about the bottom request from the we didn't have a lot of them and I just want to go over this in public, public session. Do you mind me just reading down the numbers for you? Just so you have an idea of what we've done. We got, we got 17 total requests for medical leaves. So three of them were on FMLA, two of them were on family first care, two resigned. And that's because they refused FMLA. Two of them became remote teachers at the elementary level. One, four of them did not qualify for FMLA, but did qualify for accommodations under DDA. Three withdrew their request for family care, four FMLA. One requested and process, so.
Woo, he did it. Good job, Kristy.
Yay!
Hey, Kristy.
I was trying to beat you this time, Jeff.
No, you did. I just got here. You're one for one. One and one.
You know, we always have this big Z block, which I assume means Zoom, but for the first few meetings, I thought it meant Zangie.
Yeah.
All right. I would like to recall to order the Berlin Boils to Regional Transition School Committee. So our business items, just remind me, Jeff or Kristy or Cliff, can we vote on the two MOUs together? Do I have to do it separate?
Separate.
Separate, please.
Right, and how do I, how do I name the, the MOUs, Kristy?
You can name them, it's now open session, so you can name them, I named them the Coaching MOU.
Okay, so I can just, okay, all right, I can use the name.
You can use a description, yeah.
That was really more my question, okay.
Yes.
Okay, could I please have a motion to approve the MOU to approve Coach Stipens as it relates to in seasons?
So moved.
Seconded it.
All right, thank you very much. Roll call. Angela?
Aye.
Susan?
Aye.
Cliff?
Aye.
Keith?
Aye.
Lori?
Aye.
It's an I for me as well, and could I please have a motion to approve the no, the sick time bank work exposure MOU?
So moved.
I seconded it.
All right, Angela?
Aye.
Susan?
Aye.
Cliff?
Aye.
Lori?
Aye.
Keith?
Aye.
It's an I for me as well. Just quickly before, before we adjourn, one thing I wanted to talk about real quick was my communication with Brittany Anderson as it relates to what the process would look like if we started to go to in-person school committee meetings. Her initial feedback was there's been a lot of challenges. So we've got a lot of technical stuff to figure out how to make it work. We don't necessarily, I've been doing a lot of research on like MAS. I've seen some stuff on the MAS C listserv and stuff about this, actually even just today. But I think the challenge we have is we don't necessarily have some of the resources in these bigger places that like some of the bigger cities have that have like, you know, the built-in technology for cameras and all that stuff. We rely a lot on individuals and our own laptops in front of us and Zoom meetings and that type of stuff, so I think it's something that maybe will work on, and I'm going to continue to talk to Brittany about it. Maybe we do some little bit of a test run at some point. May ask for a couple volunteers someday to see if we can do a little test run of it to get it to work. But we're having the discussion, so I'm trying to get that to go. I also sent an email on the same subject out to, I saw on the MAS C listserv as well, some of the towns who aren't doing it, their Board of Health's made recommendations to continue to have virtual meetings while the kids are in school to just cut down on any type of exposure that's out there. So there's two conflicts of interest, like two, two ways that the town's going. I did send an email to both Board of Health to see if they had a recommendation. So I haven't heard back yet, but I'll let you know what they come back with. My goal is to get us in a position where it can become an option for us, and then as a committee, we'll decide what we want to do. I'm not going to make the decision alone on this one. So, but you know, let me try to get it to work first, and then, and then we can decide what we want to do and when.
I like the in-person meetings.
Yeah, I mean, I do too, and I, and I still go back to and think that it's important, the teachers are back in school and things are starting to happen. I also think that we should follow the directives of the towns as well. The other town committees haven't necessarily started their in-person meetings yet either, so we don't have to be the flagship, so if we don't have to, so again, we're not there yet, but I'm just letting you know kind of what I'm doing behind the scenes to try to figure out if we can get there. All right. Could I please have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Seconded.
All right, Angela?
Aye.
Susan?
Aye.
Cliff?
Aye.
Lori?
Aye.
Keith?
Aye.
And I'm an I as well.